So we gotta wait out to them and we don't know that maybe in a couple of years before they pay taxes, they may leave. So we need to look at the entire situation and before you make a decision, you need to put yourself in that child position. Put yourself in the position of that bus driver. Who has to deal with those kids at that time now? Imagine them having to deal with that busload of kids for an hour long. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlene Love.
Thank you for this opportunity. I don't have a child. My child is being in the school system here, but I'm a child. The trial time, they talk about it now, but I do thank you all who listen to it all. That is a long ride from Ludbrook to Manchester. My other concern is Manchester has new elementary school, I mean middle school and high school. So do you plan to use both of those schools if you go with option two? You can somebody can get one of you later because I do want them up. People would just have one, so that's not applicable at all. If you are going to have high school in Greco, a high school in Manchester, then sign somehow have data that you aren't gonna utilize both schools in Manchester. My second concern is has any demolition cost been involved in this? Because if you close this school on behalf of the city, of Greco, we don't want this school left for us to upkeep. So somebody needs to add demolition fee to this building. On what you said a few moments ago, you have a little vast 3,000 students. A few years ago, Greco paid over $9,000 per child higher than any other surrounding area. Although we had almost other than her kind of few children in town. So Mr. Cuddlesman, at some point get with me and let me know what the cost is per child in for 2014-2015. I think those are all my answers. Thank you. Bernie Phillips.
That's Mike.
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 McDann.
I just want to say in this call, if you know, paying taxes, throwing money is a problem that's not going to solve. They, you can look at everyone they draft on you, look at your children, children going to suffer. How many of students that we have of the star students and star teachers in the last 10 years? How many students that are going to college last year, well, out of here? I mean, I understand if you got all these problems, all these shocks and I'll tell you that you can, if you can solidify some of this stuff, you can learn that some of these things. You can run, uh, 300 students, new school teachers, low school, whatever, because it's about to show you you can do. And that's, that's going on 520 years. So you guys should do something. 850 students is not too many students to teach. And I believe if you have good education, if you're alive, you have a better teacher, you can pay him better. That's how I feel.
Alan Boar. Okay. Carolyn Boar, okay, alright. Moni Garrett.
My name is Moni Garrett. I thought it was in print.
Can I hear you?
Um, okay. As far as, a lot of people talking about it's trial time. All right, you got a lot of people, you got a lot of people that go to Greco High School that didn't consider it to be. So as far as sports go, you got some kids that, that drive back and forth from practice. They only drive for like 45 minutes. So if you combine the school or you want to have transportation for them to come from back and forth our practice or whatever, you understand? So if we combine the school, then we need a bus that's going to bring the kids from football practice. A lot of kids that, I mean, that's a 45 minute drive from, from car. So it's, it would be a bus.
Shirley Hines.
Thank you, my name is Freddie Hines. I appreciate it. I live on that, uh, Forest Road on the north end of the county. I have, uh, two nations. I have a problem of this school. I have my black out. I graduated from the last seminary school, which is 1969. I saw and graduated from this high school. But, uh, I have a real issue with it and I've had a lot of calls from people that are really concerned about commanding, uh, just commanding one school. And I know it's here you have one school, but you never said which school? And that makes a big difference as to which school you're gonna, uh... Okay. It, the, the, the point I'm making is that I was bused from Lucoville to Greco and I know what it is to ride. And I get a magnitude and bust from all the way on the north end all the way to the south end. And the other issue is that if one of the parents, if there's a emergency that needs to pick their kid up for some reason or trying to get out, uh, that should not be an option. I mean, we're doing the same thing over and over and over again. We're gonna have to look at something different. We need, because of the size of this county, we're gonna need two schools, two high schools. There's no option for that. We need to look at something else and some other way in order to achieve that. Now, uh, I think I've heard several issues about form some type of committee and get that the parents have an option, but they need to know what's going to happen. I mean, this, you can look at the figures here and tell the lie. You did very good job explaining some of the things, but it really doesn't say what you're gonna do. And after they're here tonight, how would the parents know what you're gonna do other than when they see it in the paper in some way? But, but I'm totally against having one school. That means you're gonna consolidate, consolidate the bill of the county. Even whatever you're gonna do, need a short range plan. You need to make some long range plans. You need to share with, with, if you're gonna, I need to have two schools. You need to make a plan, uh, and these are just my suggestions. I, I know you in, in a certain part that I know about the budget. Uh, we're all in the top of the bill right now. We just can't keep putting taxes on. I don't have a kid in the school right now. Uh, but I have a problem and we're all concerned. So even if you need some longer range plan as a consolidation, it's called a maybe some premium or two, but, but, but as opposed to one school, having one high school is total out of what's not taking about it. Because you're gonna put hardship on the student, uh, it's gonna be larger class size and it should not, it should not be an option. Thank you.
Kinsey Gates. Katie Brandon Morgan.
I just want to start by saying I care about Manchester and Greco. Thank you. Katie Brandon Morgan. And I'm a state county native. I lived here in Meriwether for six years, Manchester for four. I'm a private CNA and I supplement my impact through substitute teaching. After tonight, I will invite you to come. This is one of the problems I wish you'd allow your employees to speak out to this day. I have two boys at Mount Newell and they're ages of six and eight and I have had to find tooth and nail for their Chevy. I mean, we're, we've got a bicycle. I think we need to hold primary education high priority. The number of graduate rate will become fewer. This is the very foundation of education in elementary and we need more resources in the elementary school. Also, we need to take into our leadership positions across the board. Leadership is key. A leader is about leading in the right direction and listening to concerns of everyone. It's about making, um, unbiased decisions. It's, those unbiased decisions to me determine the quality of that leader's ability. And I've discovered all this in my own fight for my children's education. Iron sharpens iron, right? So we need to talk to each other. We need to try to figure out something that works for everybody, for the best interest of the children because, I mean, this is obviously a real problem, but furthermore, glowing in positive attitudes, we get glowing in positive children. We all grow from the glow, teachers too. So with 80 to 12% of the funds being allocated in the administration, I feel like our students as well as our teachers deserve an outstanding leadership and accountability from their higher ups. Build it and they will come here. We need people here. Ultimately, the answers lie within you. Leadership starts at the top and it trickles on down. Whatever you decide impacts all of us. I continue to pray and rest in faith that you make well-grounded decisions and only after you've exercised all your resources and all options have been explored, that you make your decision. We're out here with the people who do care. Our children are our very best resources for our bright future. We love our babies. Help us.
Willie and let me speak to you, that's your father.
I'm taking these in.
Charlie Sten.
For everybody that don't know me, I'm John Fulmerberg. I live in Woodbury, Georgia. Uh, I have four children in this county. My kids do go to Flint River. Uh, before you discredit that, though, realize that I also have two businesses in this county. One in Woodbury, one in Manchester. I have 25 employees in this county who pay taxes. Please don't discredit me because I want what's best for my kids and I feel sending my kids to a private school is what made it this best, to this board. Last week when I spoke to him in Manchester, I was ridiculed. I asked you that if you do not respect my opinion, because my kids go to Flint River, do not respect the opinions of people who live out of county. If you send their kids to Meriwether County instead of the schools on top of them, because they spoke as well as we. Now, to the facts of the situation, we have the 24 highest school taxes in the state of Georgia out of 159 counties. And I will pick that in, the 24 highest. You would think that our system would work the way it does when I pull up to the gas station. When I pull up to the gas station, I pay, I get a high cost of gas. You would think that's the way it works. What are our ranks in Meriwether County? Does anybody know that? I did a little research today. Anybody that don't believe me, feel free to look it up for yourself. On Skowd Digger, out of 160 districts, we're ranked 158th. In 2013, Manchester High School was ranked worse than 97.5% of high schools in the state of Georgia. In 2013, Greco High School ranked worse than 81.5% of the schools in Georgia. Nobody has heard me say close the school. Nobody has heard me say have two schools. But what you are hearing me say is do not raise my taxes. We're not hitting our money's worth right now. Why throw more money at a problem that is not being solved? What I ask this board to do is to consider a fourth option that I come up with. And sound, uh, by the sounds of the people in Manchester last week and the first Greco meeting, I don't see anybody that could not agree with this option. And this option is take the $1 million shortfall, divide it by the 3,000 kids that are in our school system, which would revenue $333 per child, and let the parent pay, the elderly, the people who own property, the people who have been good stewards with their money should pay for 158 out of 160 school districts in the state of Georgia. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and sitting intended. Thank you for this time. I really want to try the one high school and one middle school option. I know that transportation is a big hurdle, but I want to give the middle school students the opportunity to grow up at their own pace. I want to give the high school students the academic and athletic opportunities they deserve to, uh, they so much deserve to compete in today's world. Ms. Lane has gone over just some of the cuts this system has already made. The one that sticks out in my mind the most is the furloughing of teachers 10 days repeatedly. The majority of the central office staff, the school administrators, teachers, staff, and bus drivers in this county are committed to the children of this system or they would not be here. They all deserve better and you, you, the board, have the opportunity to do what's right by them. You have the opportunity to do what's right by the property. Less than five years ago, we did not want to put middle school students at Greco High School. We were fine until after then. It has gotten worse. Enrollment has continued to drop. If you go with option two and the trend continues, you will be in the same place in less than five years. I'm tired of students from North Meriwether having to be the ones bussed and moved around. But we have been out for Ludbrook one more time. GHS was built for 700 students, not 900. The athletic fields were never built. I told you some time ago, it was too late to do what was fair. Now I'm asking you to do what I believe is right. Thank you for your time, respectfully yours.
David Ward June.
Thank y'all. Here, I have two things. One, the first thing would be if you're planning to work tomorrow and your boss said to furlough you for 10 days a year, how would you do? Because that means 10 days that you're gonna work for. And I don't think that's right. I don't think raising our taxes will solve that problem. I don't think raising our taxes will solve any problem at this point. So before you make a decision, let's, let's decide if we're just kicking the can down the road for next year. Like what do we do next year? We, we can't raise the bill or anything out if you're raising. And you can't furlough teachers for 10 days out of time. So, uh, make a decision, be able to look at, at the budget, consider what else that we're making do. Thank you.
And I live on Alton Road and my daughter gets on the bus in the morning at 6:00 a.m. and she does not get home until 4:45 p.m. That's if the bus driver does not have to make any stops for anything that's happening on the bus. And there are many days that I come down here to Greco and I sit at 3:15 and I wait on her because I feel like she has ridden that bus too long. So I want you to take into consideration of how many children you may lose out of this county if you move our children to Manchester. I am one of those parents, I am not willing to let my child out of the bus from Alton Road to Manchester, Georgia. I just don't think that's sufficient and I am a parent and love my children and if something happens on that bus, I will be mad at this, at this board for this option. I am not willing, given that she rides the bus too long as it is. So you need to take into consideration how many more children you're gonna lose out of this community if you move our children to Manchester. We're on the new other end. Alton, Gay, and Lucoville, that is too long of a ride. And I just can't see that happening. And I'm one of, I live, I work in Coweta County. Coweta County is a growing county. And if I have to pick it up and move my family, that's what I would do. Because I'm not willing to just, when they're further down the road, five years, we're still in the same situation. I came from there was no middle school. If you have to merge our middle with our high, I can agree with that. Or we want to extend our elementary back to the seventh grade. I have no problem with that. Eight, nine, ten, night through 12. I can, I can understand that. We can go back to that. I'll agree with that. But other than moving my child, a sixth grader, she'll be a seventh grader next year to Manchester to ride down there, I can't see it. Thank you. Miss Dawn, Jacqueline Dawn.
Adam World. Thank y'all for the opportunity to speak. I agree with everyone here, but mostly the one, the option one is just not safe. There's too much time on the road for the children. Option two, I think he's just throwing good money on top of bad. So maybe, uh, it's gonna be a problem still, a lot of travelers who do that and you could just add to a problem spending a quarter million dollars more on that option than if you just did option three and dusted the same. Uh, I don't know the right answer, whether one, two, three, or number four, Mr. Fulmerberg did his sound bad, either one of those has got to be the right answer for our children. The number one thing is that they are, the safety of our children in this county and then they get the quality of education. We can talk about the money, where it's coming from, where it's not coming from, whether it's business, whether it's education. But those two are linked together tighter than any of the money here. If, uh, if the funds for the state is not coming and we can't take care of our kids and we're losing the quality in the classroom. The businesses that do come here, someone mentioned earlier that, yeah, they're getting tax breaks to come here. That's one thing we're willing to do to get the business here. You have, you know, there's some devil's you willing to live with. But at the same time, they're looking for an educated workforce. And if they don't have an educated workforce, they're not coming here. It don't matter what kind of tax breaks you give. So we've got to have a quality education here. If they wanna, if they wanna come and then bring families here, families are looking, what's the first thing they're gonna look at? The school system. So if we're not giving them a good school system to put their children to, they're gonna live outside county. This is to come to work. So that's why we're getting less funds. I'm more interested in what some other people say is what is your five-year, 10-year, 20-year plan? I hope that as leaders and as a business model, you have a business model, that in five years, we're not in the same situation, 10 years, we're even worse than we're on there. Nothing on this ground shows any of us that we're moving in the right direction. I don't believe that going year to year, we're able to get out of this situation. I think that, uh, if the businesses want to come and if we want to teach our children the right things to work with them, then we'll be okay. But for that to happen, we've got to get ourselves in order inside this county. This board's got to get serious and it's not accused of saying it not, it's just my opinion. But you got to get serious about the future of the children in this county and the communities in this county. If we don't take that seriously, please let someone in the wing and let's move forward and grow this county. You are at a perfect opportunity in the history of this county to make some huge and significant choices in the city that generations past, you know, past us are going to thank you for the decision you've made. It's a daunting, awesome opportunity if you look at it that way, to make a huge impact on this county and the children in this county. So if I hadn't picked an option today, I would say I'd pick option three. I'm a graduate of Manchester High School and I worked in La Grange here for 20 years. And God has blessed me enough to have the money to pay for high gas to do it. And He blessed me enough that I could pay the little one tax. I also agreed I could pay for the children to make up the difference. Thank you.
If I was for option one or, or one or two or three, it's not as fast. One is if they're gonna be in the project room for police. If I'm not correct, if I'm wrong, let me know. Last time I checked, it was a rivalry, rival, Manchester High and, you know, Greco High. Now, for me, I don't want school shootings happening in my county. Especially with us having to ride down the street. And I don't want a phone call taking my child off the shop because of a rival school. And two, the fact is, I live right now, we went right down the street, my child has to stand up on the bus now that is. Because there's already, there were many kids on the bus, my kids, and then my child gets yelled at from the bus driver because of the fact that she's standing up from here to the high school. So when she told to sit down, she had to have held her butt on the seat, held her butt off the seat. To me, that's even more dangerous because if the bus was to turn over, her jar took trouble, then my child's still gonna be hurt. Now, if my child can stand up for an hour and she gets hurt, then what? What's gonna happen? Who's gonna pay my child's bills? I'm sure, I'm gonna be turning to y'all because my child has to stand up for another hour, let alone a two-second drive to the high school now? Uh-uh. And so now my, my husband drives her to school every morning, but what kids have in their neighborhood and her going down to Manchester is too far to drive or get the ability to take her and then go to work. And my child and my child, because then y'all are gonna have to find other transportation to get my child there. So I'm not putting my child on the table.
I've never done it before. I'm sorry. It is great.
Mary Maybaum.
Thank you very much. I appreciate y'all for doing that. I didn't come up here to criticize you at all. I think I'm contrary, really commended by having these public here and, uh, this, my understanding is I'm not wrong at that time. My understanding is that these public here require it's just something that you do so you can get input from, from the public. And, uh, that's really commendable for public collective, having to have, uh, public here when they're not really required. But I do have a question. Uh, I have heard from a lot of, like, a lot of social, if there is some avenue for you to raise the mill rate in excess of 20 mils for maintenance operation. And this party pointed out to make several, uh, school systems around the county that have a mill rate in excess of 20 mils for, what she said was M and O. And, uh, one in particular she pointed out was Kial County, 24 mil. And, uh, I'd like some assurance from this board that, uh, what you put on the board prior to this meeting of, uh, is in fact true that the, uh, the mill rate cannot be raised in excess of 20 mils. And, uh, all of the taxes is, if I can get a house tonight, I'd try to appreciate it. Thank you very much.
After the meeting, I'll call.
By the time I checked, it was a rivalry, rival, Manchester High and, you know, Greenville High, a rival. Now, for me, I don't want school shootings happening in my county. Especially with us sitting right down the street, and I don't want a phone call taking much off the shot because of a rival school. Next one. And two, the fact is, out of right now, we went right down the street, my child has to stand up on the bus now this, because there's already too many kids on the bus. My kids, and then my child gets yelled at from the bus driver because of the fact that she's standing up from here to the high school. So when she pulled to sit down, she had to have held her buck on the seat after her buck off the seat. For me, that'd be even more dangerous, because if the buck lifted from over her jar just a little, then my child's still going to be hurt. Now, if my child can stand up for an hour and she gets hurt, then what? What's going to happen? Who's going to pay my child bills? I'm sure, I'm going to be turning to y'all because my child has to stand up for another hour, let alone a two-second drive to the high school or nail. So now, my, my husband drives her to school every morning, but with Tim having to go to Newman, and her going down to Manchester is the two farthest drive from him to build it and take her everything to work. And my child, my buck, because then y'all are going to find other transportation to get my child there, because I'm not putting my child in danger. I've never done it before. I'm sorry.
Mary Maybach.
Thank you very much. I appreciate y'all. I didn't come up here to criticize you at all. I think I'm contrary, really commending for having these public hearings. And, uh, this, my understanding is, I'm not wrong every time. My understanding is that these public hearings are not required, it's just something you do so you can get input from, from the public. And, uh, that's really commendable for a public collective, having to have, uh, public hearings when they're not really required. But I do have a question. Uh, I have heard from a lot of, like, a lot of sources, that there is some avenue for you to raise the mill rate in excess of twenty mill's fault maintenance in operation. And this party pointed out, made several, uh, school systems around the county, they have a mill rate in excess of twenty mill's fault. What she said was imminence. And, uh, one in particular she pointed out was Key L County, twenty-four mill. And, uh, I'd like some assurance from this board that, uh, what you put on the board prior to this meeting, uh, is in fact true that the, uh, the mill rate cannot be raised in excess of twenty mill. And, uh, all in the taking is just, if I can get a house tonight, I try to appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Ask the meeting, I'll call.
I don't have any children to put to do all private school. And, uh, for my generation, we've got enough children. It's the current generation that hasn't had enough children to keep up with the erosion. Somebody's flack. But, uh, as the erosion drops, and, uh, you've got to come up with different ways to fund and to cut back. And I was reading the property taxes are a primary source of local revenue for school board systems. And since even, uh, property that is rented, we ask the landlord to pay you taxes. And if you own property, you pay taxes. But if you live in, if you live in a rented house, you're not contributing anything to these taxes on the local level. If you live in a public house, you don't contribute not one dime for the system. So when you look at, uh, the people who actually own property in the county, and I, I did a little research in, over the last ten years to see what me and my family have paid just on the school board taxes, none of the other taxes, none of the property taxes, just school board taxes, uh, paid about forty thousand dollars in ten years. So that's about four thousand dollars a year. And, uh, and you think about it now, that's, that doesn't sound like lots of money or revenue. You try to come up with four, four thousand dollars a year to pay for school board taxes when you don't have any children or grandchildren in the student system. So I'm encouraging the commissioners to order, uh, to do something besides raise their taxes. Uh, you look around here, I believe half the people in here are probably grandparents, and, uh, come to speak their opinion about the grandchildren going to school. And I'm glad I don't have a child to test it prior to now or one way or two. But raising taxes, I'm totally against it, because we, in my opinion, we pay entirely too much for property tax now. And that's it. I appreciate y'all there.